We are holding the July meeting of the Fayette County School Corporation's Board of School Trustees. Could you join me in a pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we need a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
I move to approve the agenda as submitted.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Any patron comments on agenda items? Seeing none, we move on.
Did you want to approve the motion?
Oh, I'm sorry about that. All those in favor of approving the agenda as submitted, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
You're on a roll right now.
I'm getting in a hurry here, aren't I? Whoa here. All right, now we're ready for the consent agenda. And in the agenda is the approval of amendments from the regular business meeting of 6/10/14 and special meeting of 6/3/14. The personnel report, which contained retirements, resignations, leaves of Aslins, et cetera. The approval of June 2014 claims, number 35844 to number 36133. To accepted donation of $10,005.04 from Everton Elementary PTO to purchase and install smart boards. Approval of St. Gabriel's Food Service Agreement. What is your feelings about this?
I move to approve the sub agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that question.
Thank you, Ms. Savoy. Any discussion questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. Now moving to the action items. Personnel report of Dr. Bayer.
Thank you, Mr. Burchett. Dr. Hodges, members of the board. The first personnel report tonight for your consideration has a number of new teachers on it, so I'll go through those. These are all beginning, uh, teachers beginning the school year. Annette Ballmer, temporary contract math CHS. Natalie Bussel, elementary teacher at Eastview. Danielle Douglas, special education teacher CHS. Ashley Griffey, elementary teacher Eastview. Courtney Janikowski, flex teacher CMS. Lydia Long, elementary teacher Fayette Central. Allison Reed, elementary teacher Everton. Megan Scales, elementary teacher Fayette Central. Danielle Servell, English teacher CHS. Levi Thompson, music teacher, Fraser Maplewood. Laura Williams, special education teacher CMS. In addition, math department chair Kim Carroll for the new school year at CHS. And a summer school from left over from last time, Rebecca Leavell, elementary summer school. And on the back of your report, there are six adult night school ADEE teachers starting anywhere from July 14th to August 11th at the Career Center. They would be Megan Alexander, Mike Bashir, Rhonda Burchett, Leela Frankie Mills, Sandy Page, and Yvonne Wells. Those for your consideration tonight on Mr. Burchett.
Okay, you've heard the personnel report. What is your action?
I move to approve the personnel report.
Thank you, Mr. Hilton. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Any questions, discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. And then you have another personnel report.
I do. This is the time of the year, it's prior to the start of the school year, there's a second, first time report to cover all those hirings that took place following the first indication. And we have four additional persons, all teachers, for your consideration. These are again for the 14, 15 school year. They would include Nicolette Davis, special ed at Everton. Derek Hornsby, computer applications teacher CMS. Brittany Ritter, special ed at Maplewood. And Sarah Vance, elementary teacher at Maplewood as well. Those also for your consideration this evening, Mr. Burchett.
Okay, you've heard, reported the additional personnel. Do I hear a motion to accept this report?
I'll make that motion, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Savoy. Do I hear a second? Uh, I'm sorry, who did the second? Okay, Mr. Jones. Any discussion questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries.
Thank you.
Now we move to the approval of the substitute teacher pay increase. Dr. Bayer, again.
Okay, one more time. Thank you, Mr. Burchett. You receive in your board packet some information concerning substitute teacher proposal. When that first came in 2007, there had not been any increases at all for substitute teachers, so we began looking at that in 2007. We did make a $5 increase to the categories at that point in time. Our currently, currently we have 74 substitute teachers, 19 certified and 55 non-certified. In order to stay competitive and provide subs, we've been struggling a little bit, particularly on Mondays and Fridays, but trying to have subs to cover our classrooms, we thought we needed to look at this again, this is seven years after the last increase, so that was important to take a look at that. So there really are four areas for this proposal that I'd like to share with you just briefly. One is the pay category. The increases would be $65 for those high school diploma people, GED people, or non-teacher degrees. That would be up from 55 to 65. We also are requesting that they complete a parapro, which is a minimal competency test. All of our teaching assistants currently must pass a parapro, minimal competency test, which covers math and language arts basic skills. In order to be a TA, we think that's also a necessary requirement of our teachers, substitute teachers, since they're going to be in the classroom all day with students. So that's how the raise would go. If they wish not to pursue that, and they already are aboard at $55, they would be grandfathered into that position. But for new folks coming in, that will be an expectation. We think our kids deserve the best, and they do want to make sure we have skills with all those people that are working with our children. We don't give any other days back, 180 days a school year. Everyone's important, so we think we need to make sure that good instruction is occurring every day. $70 for those subs with teaching degrees, that's up $5 from 65, which is current. And then the last area would be retired teachers who have great experiences and given a lot of years to the school corporation. They would move from 70 to 80 dollars in the pay category. The incentive, a couple of incentives, we've had for a number of years, in fact, it happened prior to my arrival, but there's a $30 stipend for all those substitutes who attended our annual July workshop, which is coming up, just in a couple of weeks. And by doing that, they receive $30 for the four subbing assignments and attending the annual workshop. In addition, we have such a struggle on Mondays and Fridays that I'm throwing in the incentive of $130 for subbing 25 or more Mondays and Fridays, because that's when we tend to have the most difficulty. And that's not here, that's statewide, that's nationwide. I've talked to a lot of my colleagues through the state and outside of the state, and Mondays and Fridays are really hard to fill, so we think that might be an incentive to get more people to sub on those particular days when the need is the greatest. The third area is, again, being highly qualified, if you, you must have all of our substitutes either pass the parapro, or have an associate's degree, or $30 of college credit. And that's very important. We want to make sure, again, we provide the best possible instruction we can for our students. And the last area is training. We have a program that has 270 different courses on it, it's called Safe Schools. We used it this year. We had pretty good success for the very first year of using it. Actually, we only had it in place about a semester, but it has short videos, vignettes, and also quizzes that go with that, that everybody can record their results and must pass those. And there are certain criteria that we're expecting each of our employee groups to do. This would also apply to our substitute teachers in the areas of bloodborne pathogens or universal precautions, suicide prevention and awareness, and bullying awareness. All those are mandated by law anyway, so this is a way to cover that. And we want to make sure all of our people are, have that training. So in essence, that's what our proposal would entail, the increase of that, cost-wise. Right now, we're paying a little over $84,000 for our substitute each year. This with the provisions and the incentives would be about $97,000, so it's about a $13,000 increase. We've shared that with our finance committee, and Ms. Kelly Pollard, Dr. Hodges feel comfortable in that. I think it will help us stay competitive and bring us the best possible people substituting when our regular teachers cannot be there. I entertain any questions you might have, Mr. Burchett, or members of the board, and this time.
I would just like to make a comment, that I think it's time that we raise, because I know a lot of people would like to sub, but if they have to get childcare, they're not making anything, so why do it?
True.
Yeah. The only other thing that I would question, now, this stipend of 130 based on 25 days, that's really nothing. I mean, is there any way that that could be raised a little bit? I think it would probably make this more people wanting to do that even.
Uh-huh. Well, it was a starting point, looking at what we would pay, the equivalent of two kind of degree teacher days, 100, that's an extra two days of pay. I also had to stay within the budget guidelines, and that was kind of the guidance given me at that point. I guess if it works and we have the manner, people are looking at that, we can always go back and review that. I weren't happy to review that, but again, I'd like to run that through the finance committee, make sure.
I understand, and I agree with you. I'm just saying that.
Sure.
You know, you divide that out, that $5, well, is that going to bring somebody in to do Monday and Friday when maybe a retired teacher doesn't really want to do it either, but a little more money might bring them in?
It's possible.
Just discussing here.
Yes, I appreciate your input on that, Mr. Burchett, and I don't know, it's kind of when you start something new, and you throw out something a little different. I've always been really pretty persistent in evaluating everything we do, that's why we're here tonight talking about this. So we would evaluate, obviously, the first year, so we'll see what happens. If this, if it's a draw, for some people, it's something to say, ah, it's not worth it, then we would go back and revisit that, I'd be more than happy to do that. It's a start, I think it's a whole bit incentive, I think people are looking for it, making a little extra dollars, and we hope that that would attract some people on those days. But I appreciate your input.
Anybody else have a comment, a question? Then do I hear a motion to approve the substitute teacher pay increase?
Mr. President, I move to approve the substitute pay increase.
Thank you, Mr. Hilton. Do I hear a second?
Aye.
Okay, Ms. Savoy. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
And now we move into the discussion items. Dr. Hodges, please.
Actually, we have approval of copy machines.
It's very tiny.
Oh.
Now, Mrs. Burchett brought you your glasses.
Well, no, but I think I need to visit the eye doctor again to read that one. Sorry about that. Okay, approval of the copy machines purchase. Ms. Pollard.
Thank you, Mr. Burchett. I believe you all received a copy of the recommendation in your packet. Four years ago, we entered into a lease for Rico copiers that will be expiring in August of this year. This is a true lease, so we will either then go on paying a month-to-month payment, basically a rental of these copiers, or we need to be moving to newer units. We began the process back in February. We took proposals from Rico, Van Ostalem Farrar, who proposed for Canon, they are a Rico and Canon dealer, Xerox, and Conica Minolta. In reviewing those proposals, Rico, who has the state QPA, had the lowest pricing on the machines. We have experienced some hiccups in service with Rico at some of our locations. Other locations are very satisfied, so we have had extensive discussion with them about the expectations of improvement in their service, should they be awarded the copier purchase. I am recommending to you to move away from a lease and move to purchasing replacement copiers, utilizing the bond banks, Hoosier Lease Program. It is a financing program whereby at the end of the financing arrangement, we own the copy machines. In the proposal that was outlined, I have also recommended the purchase of four of the copy machines that we are currently leasing. Three of those machines are at a $1,000 buyout, and one of them is at $2,000. Two of them will remain in their current location, and two of them will be redeployed in lower usage locations. Those machines still have quite a bit of useful life left in them, but may be better in a lower daily usage market, if you will. So the proposal this evening, this evening is to recommend purchasing 13, or excuse me, 16 large copy machines for distribution throughout the corporation, buying out four of the existing units, buying one new, smaller unit for the middle school library, for which they are responsible for the maintenance on it, it's not built into the corporation capital projects plan. We're also recommending the purchase of the hard drives that are in the current 18 copy machines. Data can be stored on those hard drives if they've been used to make images and emailed to individuals. So if, for example, an insurance application, which might include social security numbers for all family members, has been scanned and emailed to be forwarded to the trust, that might be on that hard drive. So we're not comfortable with those hard drives going with the copy machine. We want to buy those hard drives out, they're at $350 apiece. We're asking for the purchase of some accessories for the copy machines, also all of them at state QPA pricing. Our current maintenance is .0041 per copy for the Rico copiers. That includes toner and all of the maintenance on the machine. It does not include paper or staples. The new maintenance charge will be dropping to .0031 per copy, and will include everything, including staples. It will not include paper. So we're getting more covered under the new maintenance agreement at a lower rate. So the recommendation is to purchase the Rico copiers, utilizing the financing through the Indian Bond Bank for a 48-month lease, whereby we will own the copy machines at the end of that lease. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Just one quick question for me. The, you talked about accessories to some of the copiers at certain locations.
Mm-hmm.
What, what kind of accessories?
Okay, they were outlined in the proposal. At the elementary schools and the resource center, they, and one of the copiers at the middle school, they've requested what's called a saddle finisher. Each one of those is $440. What that does, it allows for booklets to be made in the finishing and stapled in the middle. They utilize those a lot for readers, for the students, or for programs. So those are some of the accessories. In addition, at the high school, because of their heavy-duty production machines, we are asking for large-capacity letter hoppers, if you will, so you can load several reams of paper, letter-sized paper in them, so they do not have to be refilled as often. They only have the two units in the whole building, and teachers all print to those units, so by having that extra-capacity hoppers available, it allows them to not have to be constantly refilled with paper. In addition to that, for one of the units at the high school, we're recommending a multi-tray bypass unit, so if they are producing booklets and they need a red hardcover for the top and a black hardcover from the bottom, they can load red paper in one tray and black paper in another, and it will pull from those trays to create that booklet for them. So those are the accessories.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jane, I have a question on, you were saying you were going to buy back, what, four hard drives, $350 apiece because of?
It's 18 hard drives.
18, because of data that is on them? Jane, I don't know about hard drives on copiers, but if they're anything like one of the hard drives on, could you actually erase those or have them reformatted cheaper than $350 apiece? Could those be erased or reformatted for free, somebody from your IT department, instead of buying them for no other reason, because you don't want that? And I could see why you're not wanting that data.
I don't know that they can be.
The challenge with clearing off the hard drives is a function of how intensive you go through and completely wipe the hard drive. And certain specifications would make that an expensive amount of time. It's not as straightforward as saying, erase the hard drive, you have to go through and you have to do every, pardon the technology term, you have to go through and do every sector.
Exelonous amount of.
And in most cases, you have to do that in a three-pass situation. So they eventually take a considerable amount of time to, to completely wipe. So it's, it's a function of utility of time savings. We don't typically take the hard drives and reuse them because of, particularly if these are the original hard drives that are four years old, they're already at their mean time to failure rate, and we don't want to create problems for ourselves and 18 other electronic devices somewhere else.
Would these hard drives be stored then? Is that, is that what we would do with them, or?
Only experience that I've had here from the district is one that was replaced a couple of years ago, and I believe we directed that to the vault, I think.
Yeah, we really haven't gotten that far. My conversation was going to be, Terry, is this something that the places that take our recycle computers can take and destroy for us as a part of our agreement with them?
We can reach out to our recycling company and see if they're watching.
Yeah.
Right, I would just, you know, it seemed like there was some other way to save that $350 per hard drive, I mean, dropping in what?
Well, we have to buy them out because we don't own them.
Okay.
That's, that's what we're doing, is we're buying them out.
Okay.
Or something has to be done before they're picked up to go back to the leasing company.
Jane, this Rico, do you have to go through like an office shop to purchase these? Who is, who is the dealer?
No, they're a company, they're direct from Rico.
So if you have repairs or whatever?
Rico sends a repairman. And he, the current repairman lives over at Liberty, just, just south of town.
So it's the same person?
So he, you know, well, we have had some speed bumps with the service or, or comments that have been made. We're either first on his day or last on his day. We, we do get him here quickly, because we're on his way wherever he's going. So that, that piece has been pretty nice. We know that he's going to be here at some point, either the day that we call or the very next morning. And so that, that's been good. And that's, and that's part of the expectation, that within 24 hours, we are receiving service on our machines, and that, and that's part of what we talked about in our proposals with these companies, that we can afford to be down.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions, comments? All right, now we're ready for action then. Do I hear a motion? Do I hear a motion that we approve the copy machine purchase?
Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Hilton.
I move to approve the copy machine purchase.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, I think Mr. Jones was first to arrive. Okay, any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? And the motion carries. Now we're ready for discussion items. Dr. Hodges.
Boarding your packet, you have a copy of two policies and then several appendix notations there. Typically, you don't approve the appendix, but since it's kind of interwoven with one of the policies, I included those so you can see how this all fits together. First policy I want to talk to you about is 4.33. It's pretty straightforward. We're changing policy, or at least we're recommending that you change policy 4.27. And with that comes a name change from Internet Computer Acceptable Use to Responsible Use of Technology. So that's the only change that's, that you see in policy 4.33. Policy 4.27 is really a total rewrite of a whole policy. It's, it's more than just a subtle change going from acceptable use to responsible use. It's quite lengthy. It basically was brought about because we are moving to the one-on-one initiative at the high school. We wanted to make sure that we were safeguarded and protected as best we could. And so Dr. Reiki, Mr. Miller have worked a great deal on this policy. We've also involved our school attorney to review that, to make sure that we're, we're in as good a position as we can possibly be. So rather than read that to you, we've had a chance to look at that. If you have questions, Dr. Reiki and Mr. Miller would be more than happy to answer those questions for you. And at the conclusion of all your questions, we'll consider that for first read. And the intent is to bring these policies back to, on the 29th, which is our budget workshop, but we'd like to do second reading and get those approved at that point in time, so we're good to go before school starts. Just one other thing I left out. We did, we did take this to Policy Review Committee, they did ask a number of questions, went over it very thoroughly. Appreciate their efforts, as well as Dr. Reiki and Mr. Miller.
The one comment that I wanted to make about it is, throughout, you really use the word inappropriate a lot.
It warrants that.
I'm wondering if in definitions that you should relate something to that? Do you think it's already covered?
In appendix F, which is a lot of the original verbiage that was in the original policy, has a lot of the guiding details, what's appropriate. I think, and Terry, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, we can go in and define it, but I think we talked so much about proper use, you know, you know, proper permission and those types of things, especially in appendix F. It's very, like I said, it's a lot of language from 4.27. But then there are other places throughout the, the new policy, giving guidance to the appropriate, responsible use piece. So I think the word inappropriate is anything that doesn't align with any of those components, but if you think we need to define it, we can.
I just thought, you know, it's a word that's used throughout, so, you know, if you don't kind of narrow it down, can somebody escape using it? Well, you know, that's your thing of appropriate.
Well, the attorney didn't bring that one to our attention, so I just don't know if that's common verbiage or not, but.
We'll revisit that.
I'm just asking.
We can look at it, see if we can come up with something clever. It's not too difficult.
Just, you know, what you say is inappropriate may not be fair, in my mind, or my opinion. You see what I'm saying?
Correct. That's, that's why this is as wordy as it is. That's why this is as wordy as it is, trying to be real explicit to what is a proper use, appropriate use. If it doesn't align with that, there comes the inappropriate words. But we can think of something and see if that doesn't encompass.
That's the only comment that I had. Does anyone else have a comment at this time, question? Okay, this is a discussion item, so no action needs to be taken this evening. Do we hear any public comments from the audience? Okay, moving on, then we're ready for our reports. Superintendent's Discussion Group's report. Principal Director's reports. Director of Personnel report.
Thank you, Mr. Burchett. Just a quick couple of things. We're down to five hires at this point in time, so we have a physical education teacher, guidance at the high school, an agriculture teacher, and two pre-K. My goal by the end of the week is to have three of those filled, so we're working well. I'm in contact with our principals and directors, and it looks like we might have some more recommendations here, well, obviously, come next month, but we're on the track to getting those filled. The goal is to have everybody in place and ready to go prior to our academy, which is on the 28th, 29th, 30th, so that's moving along pretty well. Negotiations with teachers begin August the 1st, we'll be getting together with President Bear, she's here tonight, so we'll be looking forward to that opportunity. And then finally, our suborientation. First of our formal meetings begins on July the 17th, which is a week from Thursday, and look forward to looking with our veteran and our new substitute teachers, and having an opportunity to get them up to date and up to speed on things. So those items are all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Director of Financial report, Jane.
Thank you, Mr. Burchett. You're places this evening. You should have found a color-coded budget calendar. I'm sure your calendars are already marked, and you're anxiously awaiting the budget workshop on July 29th at 5:00. It's a Tuesday evening. Again, I'm mindful of the fact that that is fair week, and I believe it's fried chicken night. We start at 5:00, so we'll try to finish up and get everybody out of here by 6:00 that evening. Thank you, Mr. Burchett.
Thank you. Assistant Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Burchett. I just want to give kudos to our principals and Dr. Bear in the hiring this summer, the three summers I've been here. It's always down to the nail, or before we get into starting school, we're still looking for teachers. And they've been extremely aggressive in recruiting. The portfolios that have come across my desk have been extremely impressive, and that's encouraging, and I'm feeling really good about the hiring that we've done this summer. I know we've got a little bit more, and we'll have some that we don't know yet, but I think we're way ahead of schedule, at least in the last three years, so I'm excited about that.
Thank you.
Good. Okay, Superintendent's report.
Jamie mentioned Free Fair. I think you received a memo that said that you could call Cindy Lynch to sign up for a time-to-work attempt. We do have a signup sheet here tonight, so if you want to see Cindy Young before you leave, you can sign up, but do not sign up the 29th, because we want you to eat chicken, and we also want you to be here for the workshop as well. Just to let you know how close we are, the administrators report back. Next week, we have our administrative first-day meeting on the 15th, and if it wasn't for the budget workshop, our next regular scheduled board meeting is after school starts. Can you believe that? I mean, we're August 12th, but the students will be here on August the 6th. And so the summer's over, there's been a lot of work done, there's still work to do, but I think, as already been said, I think we're in pretty good shape at this point in time. So that doesn't mean we can relax, we just have to keep pushing, but we'll. But that's all I have.
Very good. Okay, with that, we go to, for the good of the cause, anyone have a comment or anything they'd like to say?
I'd like to compliment Mrs. Riki and Mr. Miller on their efforts in working on this policy for the Internet that we're going to be getting into. Those guys had to do quite a bit of homework and convince some things. I think they ended up with a good product for us, so congratulations to those guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, if I hear a motion to adjourn, we'll be out of here.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Taylor, do I hear a second? Okay, Mr. Hilton. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And a opposed, immediately adjourned.